We want to find out if the volume is right. And we want to let everybody know that fracking is something to be concerned about. And as Lucia said, we don't want anybody to get fracked tonight.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, we are ready for a lot of people to come and learn about the hazards of fracking.
That's much better. It's much better if you're all right, if I take this down if you're all right with this.
Yeah.
Testing, testing, is it on? No. Testing, ooh, good. Can everyone hear me? Great. Good evening. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Welcome to this event. And in just a few moments, we're going to hear from Pennsylvania farmer Rongula about his experiences with hydraulic fracturing. The other farmer who was going to speak tonight, Terry Greenwood, is in Carbondale. He could not come this evening, but hopefully he'll be able to attend tomorrow's event in Harrisburg. My name is Liz Petula. And when I first heard about hydraulic fracturing and its current practice coming to Southern Illinois, I looked into this and became very concerned about the number of contamination incidents happening in other states. And I really wanted to bring this information to our communities. Hydraulic fracturing has evolved quite a bit over the decades. It is still the practice of injecting water, sand, and chemicals into the rock layers at high pressure to fracture the rock and release natural gas and other hydrocarbons. But there are now important differences as well. One of the biggest differences is the application to horizontal drilling, which is the practice of drilling down vertically and then drilling out horizontally underground for up to a mile. This application to horizontal drilling requires thousands or even millions of gallons of water, very high pressures, and a large number of chemicals in the process. The bottom line is that the combination of hydraulic fracturing and horizontal drilling has only been practiced in the U.S. for a little over a decade. And unfortunately, this corresponds to a significant number of contamination incidents happening where this is taking place. As a group, safe, or Southern Illinoisans against fracturing our environment, we are concerned about our residents being adversely affected, especially as we have the privilege of speaking with people from other states who have had serious problems with this. One of the things we would like to bring to residents' attention is water testing. And Barb McCasson is here to talk about water testing.
Yes, we are especially concerned about people who depend on wells for their water. And this includes some city water, too. I think, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think a lot of cities in this area do rely on wells. So anyway, individuals who have wells especially, we would recommend that you get baseline water testing so that you know the composition of your water before any fracking starts, especially if you are near where there is any drilling. And so we have conductivity probes that are used to test the water. And this is just a basic test that if you have a baseline, establishing a baseline, which would be several tests over a certain amount of time, that would establish a baseline of what your water is like. And then, you know, test at regular intervals after that. And if you find out that there is a, you know, a change, an appreciable amount of change in the conductivity, then that's what would tell you that you really should have a higher level of testing done. So this is a basic test, you know, that we will be offering for free. And so if you do have your own well and you're concerned about this, you pick up one of these half-sheets here. It explains the test. It gives my name and my email. And you can contact me and let me know if you're interested in this test. And, you know, you can get a baseline. So are there any questions on this? We will also be doing research, and are doing research, on people labs, actually, that do further testing. But this would be free, yes?
If you test your well now and you find naturally occurring methane and gas in the water, who are you going to blame now?
Well, we're not talking about blaming anybody right now.
Hydraulic fracturing obviously isn't called that. Yeah, but it's naturally reoccurs. They have a lot of problems with that.
Well, see, that's the...
Is your water well too deep or do you...
That's the purpose of the baseline. The baseline shows what your water normally is. And then if you see a change, it's just talking about a change in the conductivity. So if you want to know more about it, if you picked up one of these sheets, and then there is actually, you know, quite a bit of information on the Internet. Everything's on the Internet. And you can also contact me and we can try to answer your questions. So any other questions right now? Yes?
We get our water from our pond. And we have, you know, things that, you know, take the chemicals out. And we have it tested.
Okay, well, if you already have it tested, then you probably don't need this. Terry, do you have any input in that? She said that they get their water from their pond. And they do have it tested once a year. Is that for bacteria or...
No, yes.
Okay.
We just had it tested about a month ago and it was safe.
Okay, we're talking about testing for chemicals. So this would be a different kind of test. So you might want to look at different kinds of tests that would let you know if anything is changing. Okay? And this, we're talking about a free test, so it would just be a baseline. Any other questions? Terry, did you want to add anything? Okay.
Could you explain how having a baseline would be useful to people in the future?
Okay, well, if you, especially if you are near where they are drilling and, you know, you could be a mile away or more and be affected, you need to, if you are going to have some kind of claim of damage, you need to be able to show how, you know, what your water was like before any incident happened. Or before, you know, there was any suspected contamination. You really need to prove what your water was like beforehand and compare it. Because otherwise, you really, you know, they can claim, just as this gentleman did, that, you know, you had methane in your water before. So, you know, this test, like I said, is very basic. It just tells you if you need to have more professional testing done. But to have a baseline is important.
Are you working with an organization of some sort, Sierra Club or...
Yes, yes. I am with Sierra Club. Not Safe is a separate organization. Okay? So. Yes?
If you had more advanced testing, then what would you be testing for?
That might be a good question for Ron. We can save that question for Ron. Maybe he could answer that.
There is so many.
A lot of things you could test for. Heavy metals, it just depends. VOCs, sulfur, and...
Heavy metals. It depends also on what's way down there, the rock that they're fracking in. Because some of what comes up is what was down there, bringing up heavy metals or other things, too. So.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you. And finally, if residents are adversely affected by any of the aspects of this, we want people to know that Safe is here. And we will help residents to the absolute best of our ability. And we have family, neighbors, and friends who live in the county scheduled for fracking. Why are we so worried? This is why. Pardon me?
How do you know they're scheduled for fracking already?
Our understanding is that they could start as early as this month, possibly, in this county. We've also heard the date of June for saline. That's what has been in the news reports, as far as I understand.
There's been no...
There's been no permit issues for horizontal drilling in Elgin.
That's good news.
The Department of Mines and Minerals not the issue there.
Okay. That's good to know. And so we'll need to keep very much apprised of the situation. Yeah, there's been loss of leases. And the news reports have mentioned as early as May, or at least June, in saline, so...
Not till the legislature passes a set of statutes in Iowa and they can attach the line of minerals.
Okay, that's good to know. And so it gives us more time to prep. That's good.
You'd better be careful of it. There's leasing in your ground. There's a lot of people that are leasing, signing these leases, and they're not there. Probably look for farmers from Pennsylvania around there, too.
Yes.
They're signing the leases they didn't know whatever sign them at the time.
Okay, well, I think we're ready for Ron. We need someone to come up and clear the air here. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, Pennsylvania farmer Rongula.
How you doing, folks?
Question before you get started, do you own any of the mineral rights under your farm?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you get money for leasing?
Yes, sir.
How much were the rights?
Pardon me?
How much?
Seven dollars and 50 cents an acre.
How much of the mineral rights did you own?
Owned it all.
You owned 100% of the mineral rights?
Correct. Not other than Pittsburgh steam. We didn't, you know, we didn't own the coal. Pittsburgh steam, that was it.
And they gave you seven dollars for fifteen acres later?
Yes, sir. Well, it's not that they saw me coming. No one knew. They baited us with 300,000 cubic feet of gas free a year. My grandparents both had free gas. This had nothing to do with money. Period. I worked in the oil and gas industry, boys. And I know a little bit about it. And I know the games that are being played. And it's heartbreaking and it's scary. You know, you folks are hard-working folks. And when you see the footprint of this, it's very scary. You see those pictures up there? And you made a comment about the horizontal drilling? Those dead calves up there with the white eyes or the blue eyes? That's vertical drilling. We're having the same issues with vertical as we did horizontal. So it's both. And I'm sorry Terry couldn't be here because the poor guy's got a kidney stone. They were drinking out of the pond. And Terry sat up there and took pictures. Terry has so much evidence, it's incredible. All the fluids when they were drilling was running right through the hayfield, through the pasture, and right into his pond. He talked to the DEP. Our DEP won't do anything. Our DEP is working with the industry. When they came into our township and they had a meeting with the township supervisors, who I knew, they stated with the top, one of the top attorneys, because that's the first thing the industry does, when they come into town, they tie in with the biggest attorneys in town. They put them on retainer.
Well, that's what I'm talking about needs to happen here. Everybody that signs these leases around here need to make sure that you're protected ahead of time. Make sure that you put in there, we don't want any loose fluids running across your field or your path.
Well...
Make sure that you're covered. Don't just sign any old lease from Joe Lowland. A lot of these guys that are leasing around here are just land people. And they're going to farm it out to the highest bidder. And you're going to take what you win.
Here's something else that you need to know. And everyone here needs to talk to each other. Because they're using military tactics. They divide and they conquer the community, is what they do. We had guys that worked for the industry that, in their military background, they worked in PSYOPS, psychological operations. This is fact. And so you know, you made, I don't know if someone made a comment about the water. Everyone, if you have a computer at home, big story today busted up in Pavilion, Wyoming, which I've talked to some of those ranchers up there. The AP broke the story today. Wyoming persuaded EPA to delay frac finding. Read the story. It's an opener. It's an eye-opener. It's covered up, just like they're doing in Pennsylvania. I could load all you folks up on a couple buses. You could spend a couple days with me. I'll take you from farm to farm, county to county, where this is taking place. And I'll show you dead cattle. I'll show you people that have health issues. I'll show you contaminated water. See that mason jar right there? Guy holding it? That water, that neighbor was right across the road from where I used to live. And the DEP said, "Drink it." "You drink it." We asked the DEP, "You drink it." "That's not in our policy." "But you drink it, you bathe in it, and you cook in it." There's water that's black. There's water that's brown. There's water that's gray. It just goes on and on. And it's just deny, deny, deny. And again, what I couldn't stress for the most part of all of you, please talk to each other about what's going on. Because also, the Marcella shell, this is the greatest since sliced bread, right? There's going to be energy for 20 years, 30 years, 50 years. The United States Geological Services just came out with a survey a couple months ago. The industry overestimated by 80%. Wow. Four out of the, let's see, there were four wells on my property. Three out of the four are done producing. One's already plugged. They plugged it last September. A year ago, I'm sorry, a year ago, just past September. There's a lot going on here with Wall Street, folks. And then, this is what really gets to me the most. My father fought for this country. I had cousins die for this country. If you don't sign a lease, right, you're not patriotic. Why do we have six ports in the United States being converted from import to export? You don't know this. There's a lot that you don't know because they do everything under the radar. Because they run this country. And our senators and congressmen laugh all the way to the bank. Penn State titled this big time. This is the best thing, best thing to the farmers. And of course, they use the Farm Bureau. They did the very same thing to us. Farm Bureau came in because you trust the Farm Bureau. That's how it all starts. And they plant the seeds. And the Farm Bureau knew nothing about this. I spoke in front of the Maryland Legislature last year. The Maryland governor got it. They put a three-year moratorium on it. They're not screwing up Maryland like they're doing in Pennsylvania. And you have no idea how many lawsuits there are. You have absolutely no idea how bad it is over there. And around the country, where this is taking place. Your lives... Terry's story, you know, he farmed 60 acres. And he ran about 19 head of beef. You know, we're not big farmers like you guys. I mean, you guys down here, you're big farmers. You've got beautiful land down here. You've got beautiful country down here. All the operations up in our area, the land has been sliced so many times, you know, 100 acres here, 200 acres there. It's all together different. You don't have big grain farmers up there. You'll have some dairy farmers, which they're dying off left and right. And you'll have some beef farmers. But Terry's situation, he lost his water well. He lost a spring. His little pond got contaminated, like mine. My pond was nearly three acres. It turned black. And after about five days, it settled out. And it turned into a copper color or rust color, like I've told everybody. And it killed all the vegetation. And it killed all the cattails. Now, if I were pumping water out of that pond for irrigation, it killed everything. And the stream, I have an 18-inch, I had an 18-inch overflow pipe. In that stream, the bottom of the stream from bank to bank looked like black velvet. And I know a lot of people say, "Well, didn't the DEP do something?" I showed it to them. And you know what they said? "Yeah, there's something wrong here." And I showed it to the representative of the energy company. And, yeah, they're both standing there like this, with their hands behind their back. "Yeah, yeah, there's something wrong here." "Yeah, well, do you think it came from the location? Since the location has been spewing all the stuff down into my pond, and my pond's been a sediment pond for this job? Well, we don't know. We can't prove that." "Okay, could you test the mud?" "Let me look into that." "Okay." Then the rep from the DEP also told me, quote verbatim, this is burning in the back of my brain, "My farm has been a textbook case of what not to do." There's an album full of photographs down at the DEP's office in Pittsburgh. This thick. "Okay, I was with the man when he took some of the digital pictures." I did a file review, because a lot of people were telling me, "Could I do a file review down at the DEP's office?" So I did. About, I probably waited a year and a half at least. So I went down. Four manila folders on the table. Plus, it takes a couple weeks to get in there to even do the file review because they rifle through everything, what they do have. And I said, "Well, where's the album full of photographs?" "There isn't an album full of photographs." I said, "Well, Mr. So-and-so, who worked for the DEP at that time, said there's an album full of photographs down here." "He doesn't work here anymore." I said, "I know where he works." "He went to work for the energy company." This is what's been happening in Pennsylvania. They're flipping through the doors. And you know what? I don't begrudge anybody to better themselves, trust me. But that's what's going on. And a lot of things are getting covered up. Again, I could take you, folks. There are so many stories out there. There are so many people out there crying out loud. I have a dairy farmer. Milks 100 head.
I'm ready to go to Pennsylvania and look at this myself. When can I go?
Sure.
I'm retired.
Let me know. I could hook you up with a lot of people. Now, here's another issue. There's a lot of lawsuits.
Take me wherever you want to take me.
Okay, that's not a problem. There's a lot, there are lawsuits. And like, I have, you know, a lot of journalists want to interview these people. They want to see, talk to the victims that have lost livestock, lost water. Well, the attorneys don't allow them to talk. But I can take you. I have people that, regardless of the lawsuits, they're talking.
How many companies are involved with this?
Oh, my God.
And who are the companies?
Oh, there's a bunch. I mean, I couldn't even name them all. I couldn't name them all. There's a bunch of them up there. And now, some of them are moving out. A lot of them are headed to Ohio because they're, you know, they're chasing Utica because of the, you know, it being wet, wet gas. And that's another thing. You know, to direct to you fellows back there in the corner. The Marcella shell, and it's wet. In the southwestern corner, very wet. North, dry. Got it? Now, here's the game they played. They knew what they were after. They never tell. I was the one who figured out they were doing horizontal drilling. So they were on my property with an IDCO, a double. And they were up there for five, five months. For a 6,800, 6,500-foot well? Whoa, 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 wait a minute. I sell heavy equipment for a living. I used to work in the industry. I've been on triples. I've been on doubles. I've been on singles.
You didn't know it was drilling for that long? You didn't know they was drilling horizontal?
No, they wouldn't tell you. Oh, no. No. Oh, my gosh. Southwestern, Washington County. That's where it all started. I happen to have the second well. I was the second well drilled.
Did he say he'd been there?
It was, well, I had Falcon up there. Falcon did number seven. Then Union came in and did the first one. And I used to call on Union. I used to know a lot of the people from Union. But that was an IDCO. And they brought that rig in from, what'd he tell me, New York? The tool pusher. And then Falcon came in and they did number seven. And they did the vertical. And then Patterson came in with the triple to do the kick.
Well, I drilled Marcella, and I drilled Utica, and I drilled Paintsville. I drilled Bocken. And I've also drilled New Albany in Indiana and around here. It's been going on around here for 10 years. And the New Albany is a completely different animal than the Marcella. Marcella is hard. It's not a laminated type. Takes super pressure to open it up. New Albany's real loose. The laminations are real loose. And less pressure. I've actually cracked it in New Albany and it's up around 2,000 miles.
Yeah. And up here, frac valves up there, I was told, anywhere, I know they were fracking around 15,000 PSI. And they were using frac valves up to 20,000 PSI.
You're telling the truth.
I'm not here to lie, folks. I am not a liar. But you know...
Well, what I'm trying to say, this is a completely different animal than Pennsylvania.
Well...
The people do have to be careful when they lease the ground because these guys are, there's vultures out there and they will take you for a ride.
And here's the problem, too. They're exempt. The exemptions have got to come off the table. You're exempt from clean air, clean water, safe drinking water, the right to know in the Superfund Act. Superfund Act is hazardous cleanup. So you know who's left cleaning it up? You, the landowner. You, the community. That's the sad part of this.
I do have MSDS sheets on all the fracs that we do around, around here. And there's no benzene tyline, just water and soot.
What's your soil type and full structures in there?
I couldn't answer that, I don't know.
You farm, and you don't know your soil types and stuff?
I don't, I don't farm full-time. I had this farm, I, I bought this farm in nineteen ninety.
How far is rock below the top slope? How, how deep is your top slope?
Up there, it, it varies. Uh, like in the bottom land, it could be five feet, six feet. Uh, but most of the Pennsylvania, you've got rock, probably about under four or five inches, six inches of it.
Six inches, you're hitting rock.
Yeah, some shell. It just depends.
Well, there again, that's a totally different animal, too, compared to what we are.
Right. But again, like I said, you've got to go back to the exemptions, and what has been laid out for the industry, and what they can get away with. Because the lessors, you don't have a leg to stand on. Like I said, the lawsuits up there, and the lives that have been turned upside down. We've got people now, they've had, oh, also, the compressor stations, they're a nightmare. We've got people up there that are having their blood tested, their urine tested, they're in court. They've got phenol in their blood, they've got various things in their blood and their urine. And some of these folks have been told to get off their farms by their doctors and by their attorneys. That's what's going on.
Back on the track, this minute, and the pollution, is that occurring from surface spillage? Or is this occurring from the deep?
Both. It's both. I had, it looked like, uh, um, off-road diesel fuel all over the pad. And I told the DEP, because I didn't know any better, I was as dumb as a rock. I thought, because when I worked in the industry years back, I don't work in it now, I sell heavy equipment now. When I worked in the industry, if they muddied a stream, they got shut down. It was, that's how stringent it was. Now, it's just the gates are open, and there are issues left and right up there. But, uh, then, again, down here, you're gonna end up with the same issue, because it's happening in all, you know, in every darn state because of these darn exemptions.
So tell us about the exemptions. When did the gates open up?
Oh, five.
Oh, five.
With Cheney and Bush. It's called a Halliburton loophole.
I suspect...
I've heard of people who find leases, and they've had all sorts of cleanup put into the contract. Now, does that hold?
Not necessarily.
You could put, you could put more addendums in your contract. You're fighting power, and you're fighting the biggest, baddest attorneys in town. I know, I know what I've gone through since oh-five. My life is basically stopped, and that's why I'm so determined to tell everybody what's going on. Beware. Buyer beware. Here's something here, here's a quote. I don't know, probably a lot of you folks have never heard of, uh, Tony Ingraffia. Tony Ingraffia is a professor at Cornell, who knows all about fracking, knows all about formations. He teaches it. This is a corporate business plan, and also, he's going up against Penn State, um, uh, Terry Engelder, who has promoted this big time, but you've got to follow the money, because Penn State has put, I think, roughly over a hundred million dollars in their pocket from industry. That's what you have to do. When the politicians are for it, and whoever's for it, you got to follow the money. There's always a trail. See, that's how it works.
Now, has your old company, uh, paid politicians to change regulations in Pennsylvania?
No, I mean, no. Right now, Pennsylvania, so do you know, before I read this, um, there's what they call the House Bill nineteen fifty, Act thirteen. They preempted all local government from banning or putting any ordinances into place.
We promote that.
Governor, follow the money, he put about two million dollars in his pocket. The industry buys everybody. They, they control. So that, again, that's what's happening there. But right now, there is a lawsuit that's been filed, and the judge, uh, the injunction came through like a couple of weeks ago, because it was going to go into law with that House Bill nineteen fifty. It did not go into law. Uh, with that injunction from the judge, they've extended it three months. And they're looking at the constitutionality of it, because now, a bunch of the townships, boroughs, municipalities are jumping on, and they're suing the state, because it is unconstitutional. We have no rights. The industry could do whatever they want, when they want, where they want. They could put, they could put compressor stations, uh, like, say, so many feet from your house, uh, maybe, I don't know what the exact numbers are, we'll say four hundred feet, but they're close. Uh, they could put the well pad very close, um, et cetera, et cetera. Oh, this is the icing on the cake. This is clean energy, right? They got a gag order with our doctors. If you get sick, as a landowner, from your water, you can go to the, your doctor. Or if you work for the industry, and you get sick, and you go to the doctor. The doctor could call the company and find out what chemicals they've been exposed to, and then they're gagged from that point. This is in the legislation that the industry wrote. But it's clean energy. We've got a lawsuit right now, this was made, this made big news last week. I know the family, I went over and told them that their water could be contaminated. The sweetest family ever wanted to meet. They're in their thirties, they have a little boy and a little girl. Their water well was crystal clear, and it had everything in it. It was terrible. And they were having issues, and they lost a pet. Plus, they had a cryogenics plant there, they had an impoundment pond there, they had a, uh, compressor station there. And a cryogenics plant is where they're extracting the propane out of the Marcellus, the wet gas. And by the way, the farmers don't get paid for that. So anyhow, finally, they just, they went to court with, uh, the industry up there, several of them. And the judge puts a gag order on it. Right now, our Pittsburgh Post Gazette, once that gag lifted, they're taking them to court. Our local paper, Observer Reporter's taking them to court. Also, Earth Justice jumped in last week. And they, they filed their amicus, which is a tremendous brief, where they've got twenty-seven other clients, there are twenty-seven other families that have gotten sick from this issue, and there's gag orders. It's got to stop. But that's what's happening. And here's something. Tony Ingraffia from Cornell was having a debate with Mr., uh, Dr. Terry Engelder from Penn State. And the Marcella Shell Coalition, which you're probably not familiar with, Penn State was the cheerleader for the Marcella Shell, uh, the Marcella Shell Coalition. They promoted it. And when they promoted it, they promoted it very strongly, and they did no, they did no academic studies on it when they promoted it. But anyhow, it says here, and this is, uh, Ingraffia, "This is a corporate business plan, not a national energy strategy. Dr. Tony Ingraffia speaking of the current rush to drill that is utterly lacking in any comprehensive plan. This is a complex industry that will not learn unless they practice. We need to give them space to figure it out." Now, this is Dr. Engelder from Penn State talking. "I come from the religion that the industry will do it right, Dr. Terry Engelder, referring to the gas industry's need to be given time and space here in PA, so they can learn how to drill wells correctly. Engelder quoted John F. Kennedy and informed those present that PA citizens must be willing to make sacrifices to allow this practice to occur." Now, Dr. Ingraffia, who noted that over ten thousand deep shell wells have already been drilled in Texas, Ingraffia questioned, "How much more practice the gas industry might need to get it right? And how much will we have to sacrifice in order for the industry to fully implement its business plan?" We've been nothing but guinea pigs, is what we were. So, there's, also, you know, back in two thousand and ten, May of two thousand and ten, Fly, the Fly Fisherman Magazine did a, a real good article on a farmer down in Green County, because what happened down in Green County, they killed about, it was like about forty-two miles of Dunker Creek, because they were dumping. And there's a whole lot more to that mess than what the media picked up and what the industry's letting out to be. Because what was happening, they were dumping in an old mine shaft, the, the produced water, the backflow. And five hundred feet away was a, an active mine. And those miners are down in there, and the, and the mine pool keeps coming up. So when the mine pool comes up, because it's seeping over there, they pump it out, goes into their retention pond. They treat it as though it's acid mine water. Meanwhile, it had a whole lot of other things in it, and then they injected it into Dunker Creek, and of course, Dunker Creek, it killed a hundred and sixty-one species, it killed everything in the creek. It's finally starting to come back now. And then, of course, that flows into the Mon River, and we drink it. And the Mon River right now, Carnegie Mellon is following this for over two years now. The universities are following this. The barium levels are real high. And we also have had issues where the water treatment plants are putting, the TDSs went through the roof, and the industry said, oh, no, this is acid mine drainage, this is acid mine drainage. I sell heavy equipment for a living. I call on sewage treatment plants, I call on water plants, I call on local government, I call on everybody who's anybody in my job. And I'm learning, and I'm asking questions, and I'm telling them what I know. Well, the TDS levels are going up, you know, very high in, in our water, because they were dumping in like twelve or thirteen, this is back in oh-eight, when this story broke, of our sewage treatment plants. They're just dumping reproduced water, sewage treatment plant. Their solution to pollution was dilution, dumping it in the river. So, this has subsided quite a bit. There's oth- other things that they're trying to accomplish, but they're having a whole lot of issues with that, too, now. Recycling, in their pits, they leak, they leak, we've got people, again, sick, livestock, there's, there's issues, there's lawsuits. It's a mess. Um, but back to the TDSs, when they put chlorine into the water, the TDSs mix with the chlorine, and from what I've been taught, what I've been told, it creates trihalomethanes, and trihalomethanes are, you know, that, it's a carcinogen, it'll, it...
What is a TDS?
Total dissolved solids. So now, what they're doing to try to mask the water and, and help the situation, they're trying, they're putting chloramine in, which is chlorine and ammonia. Well, guess what that does to your, your, your fittings, your, uh, your, um, copper fittings and, you know, your lead, if that's what you have in your house, and a lot of people have that in their houses. It dissolves the lead, and it also dissolves brass. And I learned that from the water company, because these guys are flipping out. What are these guys doing? You know, I, it just goes on and on, folks. I mean, these stories could go, I, I could be up here for hours. Anyway...
This drilling started when? What year?
Oh, five.
Was there any much drilling prior to that?
None, sir.
None whatsoever?
No, years ago, years ago. Shallow, it was all, it was all conventional drilling years ago. You know, again, this is all unconventional drilling. And I worked on hundreds of sites, and I worked with Exxon, I worked with Texaco, I worked with, uh, Amoco, I worked with, uh, Pennzoil. And what a lot of people here don't know, back in, I think it was nineteen eighty-five, if my mind serves me right, I'm getting older. I think it was nineteen eighty-five, and I worked on, there were four deep wells, they were all triples, that were going down in Pennsylvania. It was all tight-hole information. I had product on those, on those rigs, I worked with the drillers, uh, making sure their RPMs were right, not running too much weight, et cetera, et cetera. I sharpened the bits, because I, I was, uh, selling the downhole hammers and bits for Ingersoll Rand, uh, well, a company that represented Ingersoll Rand. So we did a two-bit program. But anyway, these wells were all going down in the Appalachian Basin. And I had the opportunity to work on three out of the four. I had no idea. It was, I was nosing around, seeing what I could find out, but everything was hush, hush, hush. And obviously, that was for what's taking place now. It was all for the future.
What company you work for now?
I work for Murphy Tractor. I sell heavy equipment for a living. John Deere dealer, construction and forestry.
So what are the similarities between the formations that they're looking at to, to drill in here? Horizontal drilling here, do you, do you know anything about the geology?
I can't use it, I have no knowledge of that. I'm not a geologist. I'm only here to tell you what we have dealt with.
So, I mean, really, a person's only defense is either don't sign a lease, don't get involved in it at all, or try to get some safeguards back, but that's, that's...
God bless you, because I'm, I'm telling you right now, I want you to sign a lease, they got you.
What if you don't sign the lease? Are you, are you protected if you don't sign a lease? I mean, what if your neighbor signs it, aren't you in the same boat?
That's another thing, good question, and what happens there? People that don't sign a lease, and if your water does get contaminated, or your land does get contaminated, well, then you could sue your neighbor, and you could sue the company. And, you know, i- i- it's, it becomes a tough situation for so many people, because, you know, God bless you all, you're farmers, and you work so damn hard for your money. And, and I know that, um, you know, I had five relatives that were farmers, and like I said, I raised beef, I, I used to raise keys. Uh, I'm not a grain farmer, wasn't a grain farmer. And I was on a different farm, not the farm that I had, because I bought, the farm that I bought, I bought in nineteen ninety, and it was all dilapidated. I was starting out like a pioneer, it was all growing up. All the buildings were, were done. So, you know, I, I, I worked, I worked, I worked, I worked. That's all I did. And, and as I made my money, I would do something else to the farm. I'd clear some more land, I'd put up a building, you know, I, I did what I can do. And now, like I said, I, you know, I don't own it anymore, um, I don't own it any longer. And again, that's another whole story. Another total, complete can of worms, that what I went through with two different law firms. It's, it's a nightmare.
Well, was this, uh, horizontal drilling kind of, a, a certain amount of surface sloppiness that went on? Or, or did you meet with a lot of unknowns out there, that they didn't know what was gonna happen?
Exactly. That's the whole problem with this whole process. That's like what I just read here, it's the unknowns. They don't, they didn't have a comprehensive plan. That's why they got the exemptions in place, because they have no liability. The liability's left upon the lesser, the landowner and the community. And if you look, there's a ten K that all the, uh, companies have, um, and not just industry, I mean, not just oil and gas, but it's, um, so, someone said that you had that. Did you have the ten K for Chesapeake?
It should be on the website, yes.
People need to look, you need to look at that. The ten K is only given to the lessors and the shareholders, not the landowners. And it tells you about all the risks. Environmental risks.
It's public information, isn't it?
Yes.
It's on the wind.
It's filed quarterly, it's public information.
Right.
When you speak of "they," who are "they"? You know, I work for a company that's got fifty years of, to be a proud environmental, uh, uh, record of drilling in this, in this county, in this basin. And I, and I'm a little upset that you referred to "they" with a capital T.
Range resource.
Is every company polluting? Is every well polluting? Is every park in West Virginia polluting? And do we deem to drill a trench around West Virginia and keep it?
It's, yeah, it is a mess, yes, I could take you to a number.
It's like your beef is with the DEP in West Virginia, not anybody...
Pennsylvania. Oh, no, 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 no.
Texas has problems, they're passing legislation.
My beef isn't...
There's nothing wrong with passing legislation.
How do you get it passed?
No, I don't argue with you, I'm saying that there's nothing wrong with legislation. We work with rules every day, and we, we cherish the best rules, we want to be good stewards. I'm a geologist, I'm proud of this earth I live on. I don't want to muddy it up.
Well, it's, it's your geologist, come to Pennsylvania, come to Pennsylvania.
Don't say, don't say "they," say the companies that are doing it, use their names, and don't say "they," because I'm part of "they." And it, and it, it hurts me.
Well, all the companies in Pennsylvania, there are issues with the companies in Pennsylvania that have been up there. And I could take, I don't know about every one of them, I could take you to, I could take you to every county.
You just said all, is it every one of them?
I could take... I know there's a number of them.
Don't use general terms. Be specific. Don't say all. Don't say they.
Is it range? Is it Chesapeake? Is it Encana who is?
Yeah, like, range was on my property. And I said that. I said that earlier on, range. Yeah, I said range.
Is it Union drilling? Is it Sam Jack?
No, 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 no.
Patterson? Well, you keep saying they and you're throwing everybody.
The industry, the companies.
Throwing everybody under the same bus. Be specific.
The problems that we've had up there in the counties where they're drilling, we've got problems and we've got people, and I could take you there.
You keep saying I can. All I'm asking you for is be specific. Don't use they. Don't use all. Don't use everyone.
It's drilling. It's, it's drilling.
It's all drilling.
It's drilling. The drilling, where the drilling is taking place, they're having issues because,
I just mentioned three or four drilling contractors and you shook your head no. So those, those are,
I'm not saying drilling con, well, the drilling contractors are working for the industry.
Well, all drilling contractors are working for the industry because they're out there drilling wells.
Sure.
Well, now, like I said, does, does Patterson Drilling have a problem? They causing problems?
Oh, I, yes, I had problems with them.
Union?
Yes, I had problems with Union.
Which, one,
But what, what do you do? I mean, I, I couldn't do anything about it. I, I tried.
I know one story of the Patterson rig out there had a diesel spill on the location. They shut the rig down, moved it, cleaned up the location and went to drill someplace else. Because they had spilled.
Well, we've had, we've had more than just that. We've had a lot of water contamination.
You're telling us all kinds of horror stories. Is it all horror stories or is there, is there some good going?
You could go, you could go to all the counties where the pro, where they're drilling and there are issues with water. And there are issues with people that have lost livestock. Now, I don't know who all is up there drilling, because there are a number, there are a number of companies. So, you know, I mean, if,
You're asking me to be specific. Don't throw everybody under the same bus because not everybody's doing it.
We, we've heard that part. I didn't talk.
Well, sir.
Acid, here's a, here's a thing that you could ask. There are companies from Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi right now that are going in the courthouse. Ask them which company they work for. And, well, there's the thing. How do you sort out bad apples from good apples?
That's why you don't sign it till they do.
E- exactly. And I'd like to talk to you afterwards because you're a smart man and I'd like to talk to you. Cause, cause I live in the state of Maryland and I'm not back here to tell anybody in Wayne County what to do, but I was born in Fairfield.
I'd like to pour out something that took place on the farm I grew up on. They started drilling there before I was born. And I worked in an oil field in the water floods and the chemical floods. At home, even out of the Ovas. Out when they water flooded and chemical floods, the old casings were too old and rotted out. And all that stuff come to the surface. Now, you know what you got? You got killed land, not just the saltwater. And I say they are all of them.
Well, sir, you, what, what, what you're talking about? I'm not, I'm not here to argue. I know I, I always have industry in the room. I'm, I'm not here to argue. You know, I'm not gonna do that. You, you, you want to be specific, sir? I mean, don't try to put the spin on it and try to degrade me. Yes, you are. Don't do that. That's not right. I'm just telling you what I've gone through and I'm not spinning anything. Sir, and here's another thing. When they did frac, what this, sir, what this man just said, that's another problem. We have over three hundred thousand wells in Pennsylvania that they do not have recorded. And they are conduits. They're conduits. When they're fracking, guess what? It happened on the farm beside mine. It looked like an artesian well. And it was drilled in nineteen oh-one. And they don't have these even on record. The, the, the Pennsylvania DEP doesn't have a clue.
So how does the nine thousand foot frac shop get to a twelve hundred foot well? Explain that to me. A well that's being fracked at nine thousand feet below the surface? How is it communicating with a well that's a thousand feet?
They're, they're around sixty-eight hundred. And again, it's for,
So how does it get from sixty-eight hundred to whatever the old wells were drilled cable tools are?
Well, this is what I've been told by a driller and by some of the academics that I'm deal, that I've talked to and worked with. Our formation is full, Pennsylvania's full of fi, uh, fissures and fractures. And when they're fracking at fifteen thousand PSI, they've come all the way to the surface. They frack the well.
That makes a lot of sense. Therefore, all the water, all the intervening water is going to go into their well. They're gonna lose their gas to the surface. Anywhere they frac, that doesn't seem very economically viable that they do.
It's happened. I'm not saying it's happening everywhere.
But it doesn't seem very economically viable that they keep fracking if it was coming to the surface like you're saying.
They also have, uh, casing that, uh, split. And they tried to cover that up.
Who has casing that split where? What specific wells? I mean, is they, again, you're back to your they. You're back to, they, the industry did this. It happened in this county.
Something a little less day. Uh, if, in the November two thousand eleven Scientific American, they have an article about this. And I was gonna ask that problem because one of the problems they identified were problems with stray wells. Old straight wells because the concrete sheath that they're supposed to have around that well, the concrete isn't real good always. And they don't have a good way of knowing whether it's good or not. And they're getting, and they have proven cases that they allude to here where that is working just like this kind of fracking where they, they bend it, go out for maybe a mile or more. And you have a couple of problems. One is you don't know where there are going to be natural fissures that allow it to come up. And, and you know as well as I do that ground is not stationary. A lot of us live on unstable ground. This is a fault line that runs through here. And you may have something that's perfectly secure today and tomorrow the ground shifts and you, now, they don't, they don't have a way of dipstick and say this one's gonna work this one's not. But that's how the, the problem can come up. And there's an article that you can read to, to get some of the background.
Let me add something to that. I know of three wells and within three miles that have never been plugged. One of them, they stopped producing forty years ago. And yet the state has a record on how many bags of cement's been put in and all that. And these are sticking out of the ground, two foot. And one of them's about four hundred foot from my house that's never been plugged. Now, why is the state or who got the money for not plugging it?
They should do something about that. That's right.
But yet, state, state was brought to attention and they come up with paperwork says, well, so-and-so had the lease and, okay, I'll mention the name. He's dead in nation. So you know how long ago that was. So many bags of cement put in, plugged, surface cut off, four foot under the surface. Yet it's sticking out, two foot up. State says, well, that's just a pipe. The son-in-law hit it with a combine. It wrecked the, the corn head. Don't tell me that pipe was just stuck in the ground. And yet state won't do a damn thing about it.